2021 Planning Commission Meeting. In accordance with Executive Order N-2920, the Planning Commission Meeting will be held virtually. And if you'd like to join us, please go to the county website, the Planning Commission website, and it'll give you options to join us by phone or by computer. And I will let you get that information for yourself from that site. With that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as strong.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please, Laura?
Commissioner Allen Bonjio. Ronnie Pellegrini.
Here.
Noah Levy.
Here.
Mike Newman.
Present.
Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
Brian Mitchell. Melanie McAver. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Laura. Director, do we have any modifications tonight?
We do not have any modifications to the agenda, per se. Unfortunately, we do have a pretty good list of supplementals. We have a supplemental for item number E3, which is ancient truth. We have a supplemental for item F1, which is the amendments to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. We have a supplemental for item F4, the Emerald Coast Genetics Conditional Use Permit. We have a supplemental for item G1, the industrial hemp land use ordinance, and we have two supplementals for item G2, rolling meadows. I said ancient truth.
Thank you, Laura. All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Section D, which is public comment. This is the time when anybody in the public can speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight. So, let's see. I'm not showing anybody. Some reason. Go ahead, Ken. I may need one of you to, because I'm not showing my list like I usually do, and I'm not sure what I missed.
Well, good evening. Ken Swatki here. Last supervisor's meeting, and I don't want to misquote him because I respect him a lot, Thomas Mulder, I believe, made a comment regarding maybe retroactively putting some kind of constraints on the, well, we have all these cell towers around, and to make sure that either they pay their share, something about fire districts, and that made sense to me, and including improvement of roads to those cell towers. There is something that I think maybe, and I know everybody doesn't like retroactively or changing the goalposts, but you're building an airplane while you're flying it, and that's been what we're doing with this cannabis ordinance. And I think maybe we could add an extra turbo booster to it or something. And what my thought was, and I've run this by staff a little bit, and it's something you might want to discuss in the future, was that I have a real concern regarding the decommissioning and removal of all the plastics associated with the hoop houses. And if you were to just imagine, we need to find some way that the county's not going to be burdened with those things should this market go away and we end up with miles of plastic out there blowing around in the environment. One thing that was discussed that I've been considering proposing, and I'm open to suggestions to fix this, was that the applicant who has a permit, should they cease to grow for a year, in other words, not pay their cannabis tax, maybe they're leaning toward not growing anymore after they have their permit, would it be required to that time to either remediate their site, which I don't think they probably would want to do, or put up a bond that will pay for the removal of the plastic thing? Kind of like when you have one of those surface mines where you have to restore the thing back to its prior shape and not just abandon it. So, it kind of has to have a little bit of a hammer, and maybe, and I know it'd be burdensome to have the bonds from the start and all those things, but if someone kind of is showing the intent of possibly not growing in the future, might be time to adapt and bring that current on all your outstanding or all your existing permits. Just a suggestion, don't want to change the goalpost too much, but I am always out looking after the environment, and we seem to not have too many environmental groups really looking after the potential negative effect we can have of all those plastics out there. Plastic's one of the most detrimental things to the environment. So, that's just my suggestion, thought I'd bring that topic to you. Maybe you'll consider that in the future. Thank you, my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next caller, Public 3053.
Good evening. Thomas Mulder, I just want to clarify, you can hear me because I'm getting some weird feedback on my end.
Yes, you sound good.
Okay. So, I guess I got to respond to Ken a little bit here. I believe the cannabis industry is here to stay. I look forward to building a business that my children can take over if they so decide to join the industry, if not, be able to pass it on to the next generation. As far as roads, I believe I heard last Planning Commission meeting about there was an applicant that had a road issue, so I actually support you, the Planning Commission, developing a road ordinance or a minimum requirement, but also involving all commercial activity, because I've always preached, I want parity and equity, so all commercial activities should be treated equally. If cellphone companies can have reduced fire safe standards, then cannabis companies can have reduced fire safe standards. If we believe fire safe standards are important, which personally I believe it's important because for fire danger to have everyone have fire safe standards, I think we should develop, there should be an ordinance developed to protect community people that are close to commercial activities. And the other thing, I said this to Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, I think if we can move forward on developing policies that have families able to stay in properties and do forestry management, maybe cultivate cannabis to supplement their income, I think we're going to have a lot stronger and healthier of a community in Humboldt County, and that's what I hope, moving forward, we can keep promoting. You guys did do the small farm ordinance and the small personal use, which I think is a good step in the right direction to promote that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other public that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to Section E, which is the consent agenda. We have two items on consent agenda. The first item is the Jim Cables Parcel Map Subdivision and Lot Line Adjustment Extension at 4629 Union Street in Eureka. Does anybody care to have that pulled from consent? Seeing none, I will leave that on consent. The second item on consent is the Rick Maugh Conditional Use Permit in the Highway 299 Willow Creek area. Does anybody wish to have this item pulled from consent? Seeing none, we'll leave that on consent. So, with that, do I have...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move Items 1 and 2 on the consent calendar.
Motion?
Second.
Brian. And Ronnie is the second. Seeing none, I'll call for the question, Laura. Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
A yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion carries now, say thank you, Laura. Next, we move on to Section F, which is Continued Public Hearing. And the first item is Amendments to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan and Coastal Zoning Regulations to Allow the Samoa Peninsula Wastewater Project. And I would ask for a staff report.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is John Miller. I'm a senior planner in long-range planning, and I've been the project lead on the Samoa Peninsula Wastewater Project. Troy Nicolini, who's the Peninsula Community Services District Board Chair, is here. If you have questions for him during the presentation, I'm going to try and share my screen. Let's see here. Is this visible to everybody? Okay. So, again, my name is John Miller. Let's see here. First, I'm going to present some background information on the project, what it's intended to address, and how the Humboldt Bay Area Plan inhibits the ability for us to address the problem. I'm going to describe the project planning that's taken place and coordination, including the grants that the county has secured for the project and the system design, and then describe the amendments to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan and the coastal zoning regulations that have been devised to allow the project to proceed. And I imagine your commission will want to hear some public comment thereafter. Here's the project webpage. This is on the Planning Department's webpage, and it contains a great deal of information about the project, including contact information for me. The webpage also contains all of the supplementals to this staff report, which are supplemental one has the revised amendments from the initial staff report based on additional comments from the Planning Commission and revised amendments to the zoning regulations. Supplemental two has one correction to our revisions to the regulations, and a comment letter from Craig Spute, and staff responses to the comments from Craig Spute. Supplemental number three is a comment letter from Richard Spute. And supplemental four is an email from Roy O'Connor from the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board with some follow-up comments from Mario Calson with County Environmental Health regarding the comment letters from Craig and Richard Spute. So, going to go through some background. And let's see, this project is intended to address water quality impacts from onsite wastewater systems on the Samoa Peninsula. The Samoa Peninsula has fast-raining soils and high groundwater, and it has many aging septic systems, and in the community of Fairhaven in particular, it has all of these characteristics plus very small lots. The Fairhaven area has very strict onsite wastewater standards. It's considered a variance prohibition area, which means that only a standard wastewater system with standard groundwater separation can be approved. Consequently, a new system would require approval by the Regional Water Quality Control Repairs can be approved by the county, but they require strict designs. So, the Humboldt Bay Area Plan contains limitations on sewer service extension. So, sewer service is only available within the Samoa Town Master Plan area. It's not available outside. The Samoa Town Master Plan area is essentially the urban limit line, and sewer service in the Humboldt Bay Area Plan area is only available within the urban limit line. The county's been working cooperatively with a number of agencies to address this problem. The county received several grants to evaluate the use of the ocean outfall, the Harbor District's ocean outfall for community wastewater service. The county then subsequently got a grant from the State Water Resources Control Board to plan and design a wastewater system to serve the areas outside of the town of Samoa and to conduct environmental review for that project. The county has also been, you know, doing a great deal of project facilitation with County Environmental Health, the Coastal Commission, Tribes, State Water Resources Control Board, Regional Water Quality Control Board. A component of the planning grant was environmental review. The county, the Peninsula Community Services District wasn't in existence at the time that the grant was sought, and the county, on behalf of the Fire District, going through reorganization to become a community services district, county was the applicant, therefore the county was the lead agency preparing the environmental document. County consulted with GHD and SHN Engineering to prepare, to design the system and plan the system and to conduct environmental review. The environmental review related to expanding the wastewater treatment plant that was recently completed within the Samoa Town Master Plan area, use of the ocean outfall, and the collection system to serve all existing structures that are currently served by onsite wastewater treatment systems. We consulted with the tribes, which resulted in additional mitigations and protections for areas containing cultural resources. There was scoping meetings and public meetings on the EIR held. No environmental effects were found to be significant and unavoidable. The mitigations relating to air quality, odors, biological resources, there's lots of sensitive habitats on the Samoa Peninsula, cultural and tribal resources, avoiding cultural resources and working with tribal organizations for construction monitors, mitigations relating to the strong ground shaking, seismic conditions, hydrology and water quality, and noise associated with pump stations and the wastewater treatment plant. The board certified the EIR a few months ago, and as part of the county approving the project, the county initiated the amendments to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan to allow the project to proceed. The Community Services District will now, with this certified EIR, will be able to submit their final construction financing applications to the state and federal government. This is the project area. The blue outline is the Peninsula Community Services District boundary. The yellow shaded area is the Samoa Town Master Plan area. As I indicated, there's a wastewater treatment plant there now, and that plant is designed to serve all uses within the Samoa Town Master Plan area. This project is intended to connect the uses outside. This is the project layout. These balloons, which you're likely not able to read, identify some of the most notable existing structures served by onsite wastewater systems, including the Peninsula Union School, the Redwood Marine Terminals 1 and 2, the Fintown area, the Fairhaven Business Park down to the airport, the county's boat launch, and the Fairhaven Townsite, which has 60 or so, I think it's 90 or so, existing structures served by onsite wastewater systems. The map below shows the route of the collection system and the location of the wastewater treatment plant in Samoa. The limitations within the Humboldt Bay Area Plan are in the Rural Public Services section. The areas outside of the urban limit line are considered rural, and it isn't appropriate to extend sewer to those areas except to provide service to industrial uses. The Samoa Town Master Plan also has a policy, which is Land Use Designation Overlay New Development Policy 9, which states that wastewater can only, at the wastewater treatment plant, only wastewater from within the town of Samoa can be treated there. In this project, basically, the Peninsula Community Services District is going to, will soon be operating the wastewater treatment plant, if they aren't already, in the town of Samoa. And so, that wastewater treatment plant would be expanded for this project, subject to this amendment allowing wastewater from outside of the town of Samoa. As I indicated, we've done a lot of coordination with the Coastal Commission. They've been expressing a number of concerns about this project. The Samoa Peninsula is subject to sea level rise and tsunami inundation hazards, and they've questioned these infrastructure investments within this area. They've expressed concerns about new residential development within Fairhaven, within these hazard areas, and if development were to occur on vacant lots in Fairhaven, there could be impacts to environmentally sensitive habitat areas. We crafted our amendments to address the Coastal Commission's concerns as best we could and to allow the project to proceed. So, first off, we'd be adding an exception to allow the extension of service outside of the urban limit line. We wouldn't be moving the urban limit line. We'd be expanding the exceptions that currently exist to allow the extension of the collection system to all existing structures served by septic systems. We would amend the Samoa Town Master Plan policies to allow wastewater flows from outside of the town of Samoa, consistent with the exception allowing the extension of service. And then, we would have a Q zone, which would overlay the residential single-family zone in Fairhaven, which would basically have a series of performance standards for new residential development within a distance of 300 feet from the sewer collection system. The performance standards would address hazards relating to sea level rise and tsunami inundation, as well as ESHA impacts. And 300 feet, the magic number, relates to the county's building regulations, which specify that development within 300 feet of a public sewer main must connect. And so, we discovered in the environmental review process that we had originally intended to prohibit development, at least as an interim step, within Fairhaven to address the Coastal Commission's concerns. We found we couldn't do that because of the county's building code and the state building code. And so, we're putting these performance standards to address their concerns relating to hazards and ESHA impacts. We, let's see here. So, I'll go from here to the, I could walk you through the proposed amendments, section by section. This is the rural extension of service policy, 3.22B Development Policies. And the underlined sections are what we're adding. The strike through is what we're proposing to delete. So, we're adding exceptions. In fact, we're reorganizing the policy, the policy, to make it easier to read, easier to understand. And so, we're, first off, we're expanding the exception, which already exists, allowing service to industrial uses within the rural area. The interim conditionally permitted uses within the coastal-dependent industrial zone were added several years ago. So, we're making sure that these interim uses can receive wastewater service as essentially by right. And we're expanding this to say, any coastal-dependent uses, these are the uses that are intended to be encouraged within the coastal zone, so it's appropriate that they should have sewer service. The next is we're, the exception that, let's see, we're setting up the extension of service outside of the urban limit line within the boundaries of the Peninsula Community Services District. So, the Coastal Commission expressed concerns about the high groundwater levels and sea level rise, and the EIR has a mitigation that specifies that the system is, shall be designed consistent with a geotechnical report that considers high groundwater, projected sea level rise, and seismic events. So, to address the concerns of the Coastal Commission, we're putting this into the policy. The purpose of the project is to address the water quality. So, this section says the system is intended to serve existing structures that are served by onsite wastewater systems. The system is not intended to be extended beyond the footprint that is part of this project. So, any further extension requires an amendment to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. Because legal lots within 300 feet could connect, we're setting up the Q overlay zone here by describing the performance standards that are intended to address hazards associated with tsunami inundation and sea level rise, and to be as protective of environmentally sensitive habitat areas as feasible. And the standards will be adopted by ordinance as part of the zoning. And that property owners approve projects, the property owners would acknowledge the risks, and that shoreline armoring structures would not be approved to protect their project. And we're also making some clarifications that we believe that the limitations on the extension of water service didn't relate to fire protection. This last deletion is we moved the exception relating to industrial uses up to the top. Samoa Town Master Plan Policy 9, this one, we're just saying no sewer service, no effluent from outside of the Samoa Town Master Plan area, except the wastewater flows associated with the exception contained in 3.22 that was described above. This is, this next is the draft ordinance, draft Q zone ordinance, and it tracks the proposed policy very closely, adding additional details. So, the area is currently zoned residential, single-family, no further subdivision allowed. It's been zoned that way since the Humboldt Bay Area Plan was certified, and we'll be adding a Q combining zone to the areas at least within 300 feet. So, the special restrictions relate to development within, proposed development within 300 feet. The purpose of the qualification is that the existence of the wastewater line would make the lots appear more desirable for development, when in fact, there remain many issues that would limit the ability for a property owner to develop. So, the restrictions relate to health hazards and to environmentally sensitive habitat areas. So, the restrictions apply to single-family residences and to accessory dwelling units, and they specify that coastal development permits may be granted, subject to findings that, in the event that there's environmentally sensitive habitat areas within the lot, that the project is ceded to the greater to the greatest extent feasible to minimize impacts to environmentally sensitive habitats. The next relates to sea level rise. The county is currently in the process of amending the Humboldt Bay Area Plan to incorporate a program relating to, to sea level rise adaptation. The, this, these amendments precede that. So, the amendments say either the development is going to be consistent with the amendments to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan, or the, the applicant is going to hire qualified individuals to conduct sea level rise planning for the site that are comparable to the planning that the county is in the process of, of carrying out. So, to, so that the site is, site won't create a hazard to life, health, safety, or general welfare, or to coastal resources. The, the, the next finding performance standard relates to tsunami inundation. All of the developable area of Fairhaven is within the tsunami inundation area. High ground exists adjacent to, to Fairhaven. And this, this standard would say that the proposed development is consistent with the updates to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan relating to tsunami hazards. As with sea level rise, we are working on updates to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan relating to tsunami. We're working closely with the California Geological Survey, and we hope to have that, those adopted as soon as possible in the event that development precedes that. There is an existing policy in Humboldt Bay Area Plan that relates to tsunami hazards. The policy is designed to be applied only when residential development is, is intensified, a second dwelling unit, or it's multiple family, multi-family development. So, what we're doing here is we're applying that standard to new single-family residences or accessory dwelling units. And that, that policy requires that the, the structure would be elevated above the tsunami hazard, that the structure would be designed to withstand tsunami forces, and that, and that it's, that all work is done by qualified expert. Then, the, the last additions are the acknowledgements relating to the hazards, indemnifying the county, waiving claims of damages or liability, and assuming the risk of injury, and acknowledging that shoreline armory, armoring wouldn't be approved as project, part of the project, would not be available to the, to the, the property. And here is the map of the, the, of Fairhaven and where the Q zone would be applied. So, the, an environmental impact report was prepared. It incorporates mitigation measures. There's a mitigation monitoring reporting program that was adopted. However, SEQA does not apply to the preparation and adoption of a local coastal program by the county. So, upon approval of the LCP amendment by the Board of Supervisors, Planning will file a notice of exemption. Your, your commission could recommend that the board not approve this if the commission finds that the evidence presented doesn't support making all of the required findings. Planning staff does not recommend this. Planning believes that the evidence supporting making all of the required findings is present and doesn't recommend further considering an alternative. And the, this next side sets up your commission's actions. I'm available for questions. Troy Nicolini is, is available for questions. We could walk through the comments received as well.
Is, is there any questions for John while we're, he's asking right now? Or any commissioners have any questions?
I have a, I have a question. John, what tribal groups did you consult with?
We, we, we notified all of the tribes that the Native American Heritage Commission, so basically all of the tribes in Humboldt County. We, we had a meeting with Blue Lake Rancheria, the Wiaq tribe, and Bear River Band of the Ronaville Rancheria.
And can you describe a little bit about the infrastructure that's going to do the treatment out there that is being recommended? And any possible discharges or?
The, the treatment system recommended is a sequencing batch reactor mechanical system. It, it, I guess, it was, it was, it treats to the highest quality, to the, to the, to the required quality. And it's a, it's a commonly used system. The, the waste would be, the, the wastewater would be discharged through the ocean outfall. And this is, if this isn't occurring now, it will be occurring very shortly. The wastewater treatment plant was, that is there, was approved by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, both the treatment and the discharge through the ocean outfall. So, the, the, the sequencing batch reactor would treat to the same requirements as the currently permitted system. The collection system is gonna, it's gonna be a combination of gravity and force main with a handful of, of, of pump systems. The, the, the pumps were designed to avoid odors and to meet noise requirement, noise, noise thresholds.
Did you have any comments regarding the discharge into the ocean from, you said, the public comments?
There were no public comments on the EIR for, relating to the ocean, the, the discharge, discharge to the ocean. We made sure that the, that the surf rider were aware of, of the project, as well as the baykeeper. And in personal conversations I had with baykeeper, I think they were supportive of the project because the onsite wastewater treatment systems are currently a hazard to bay water quality.
Brian, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to follow up about something I believe I heard you say about the availability to connect for interim uses that are approved in the coastal-dependent industrial zone. And I was wondering if that was just for already approved interim uses? Or if that would allow new interim uses to be approved there? And if so, is it possible that that could be growth-inducing or encourage more development to occur inside the coastal-dependent industrial zone that's not coastal-dependent, if that makes sense?
The, the existing interim uses that are within a structure that has an onsite wastewater system would be connected. The, the exception that, that we are recommending would allow new interim coastal-dependent uses, which are consistent with all of the, the standards that, that were adopted with the interim use requirements, that it would allow those interim uses to connect. Growth inducement, whether, and the discussions relating to growth inducement weren't really focused on industrial uses or uses other than residential. The Coastal Commission was particularly concerned about inducing growth within Fairhaven. And the, the final EIR expanded the analysis of growth inducement that was in the draft EIR. And we feel that, that we were exhaustive in our analysis and demonstrated that the, this project would not be growth-inducing.
Thank you.
It would be growth-accommodating. It would accommodate planned growth. The current, the area is currently primarily planned for industrial uses, both general industrial coastal intent, coastal dependent industrial, and there is, there, there are vacant legal lots within Fairhaven that could potentially connect, subject to the performance standards.
Can I answer your questions, Brian?
Yes, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
This, this, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This, the growth inducement was also a concern of the, the two recent comments that your commission received. And we believe that the, the topic, that some of the, the, the growth-related issues that were being described in the letter don't relate to the project. And we believe that the final EIR adequately addressed growth inducement.
Mike, you had your hand up, and then Melanie after him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was then answered with both Brian's question and John's added thing. I have one other little tidbit is just to make sure that the possibility of the Nordic Farm development is not inhibited or prohibited from anything on this draft.
The, the consultants working for Nordic have been in touch with us. They think that, that it's a multi-phase project, and they're, they're hopeful that the project will be in place for their later phases. So, and so that there would be no limitation on Nordic connecting to this system. That there's currently an exception in the Humboldt Bay Area Plan, allowing industrial uses to connect.
Great. And, and they are coastal-dependent as well, right?
Yes, they are. But the, that, that exception isn't limited to coastal independent.
Okay. But there are performance standards, you said?
The performance standards wouldn't apply to the, to the Nordic project. The performance standards only would apply in the, in the town of Fairhaven, within parcels that are zoned residential, single-family.
Okay. That's what I thought. I'm just making it clear. Thank you.
Melanie?
Thank you. Yes, I just wondered if we could have a little bit more clarity on the monitoring plan, specifically how often it will be monitored and by whom? And also, in case of, you know, any hazard, is there a contingency fund set up? And if so, who is managing that?
The mitigation monitoring and reporting program is really going to be, it's gonna be a condition, it's gonna be applied to the Peninsula Community Services District when they come forward for a coastal dependent, for a coastal development permit to construct the project. They will then be subject to the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And, you know, it, it relates to many of the, the standard SEQA mitigations for, for construction. Is, are those, is that the monitoring that you were referring to?
Yes. And, and long-term for the monitoring plan, is it on an annual basis, or is it more frequent? And if something were to happen, is there a contingency fund? And if so, who is managing that?
The, and this may be a ti- good time to bring in Troy Nicolini with the Community Services District. The district will be establishing rates that all those who are connected to the system will pay into, that will cover the costs associated with operating the system. And I, I would encourage Troy to come in if he's still available. If it's possible.
If you're there. I see him. You have to meet yourself.
Yes, hi. Thank, thank you. This is Troy Nicolini, and with the board of the Peninsula Community Services District. I was just quickly texting our wastewater treatment plant operator to ask him what the reporting responsibilities are, because I honestly don't know off the top of my head. I, I believe it's quarterly, but I'll confirm that. And, and we, we are now running the Samoa plant. We are now discharging through the discharge outfall pipe right now, and we're monitoring right now for that system. So, we do have the expertise and the protocols in place already for the existing system. We would just expand that for the system that serves the rest of the peninsula. As far as a contingency fund, that's actually a great question. And, you know, frankly, we're new to this. And so, what I will do based on that question is reach out to adjacent jurisdictions that manage similar-sized systems and ask them how they address that issue. And I can tell you, we have already been in contact with California Department of Public Health regarding shellfish safety. And so, we have protocols in place. So, if there's a discharge to the bay, that we would notify the shell, shellfish regulatory body at the State of California, that would then shut down harvest to make sure that no unhealthy oysters were harvested. That's actually very unlikely because the system is discharging out to the ocean. So, all the infrastructure and all the main, main lines are, are on the ocean side versus the bay side. But just the same, we have those protocols in place. But that's a great question.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it's important to get that clarified. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing no other hands up, I am going to open this up for public comment.
Sorry.
No, I, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Forgotten that we have not even had public comment. My, my mistake. I was gonna make a motion to approve, but let's, let's get the public comment first.
Let's get some public comment, and then I'll ask you to do that. We got a lot on our agenda tonight, so it'd be nice to move them quick. Okay, so we're gonna, looks like we have one caller, and it looks like Mr. Swatzky. Go ahead, Ken.
I did want to make mention, if we're gonna continue Zoom meetings, when you have these addendums that come in, the public used to be able to pick those up and read those prior to the topic being forwarded. We need to have some kind of addition to your website, or at least get an executive summary of those, because we don't have a clue what Roy O'Connor said from the Water Board. I really appreciate working with Roy and stuff on topics. He's extremely sharp in what he does. But for us to even make comments, we should have access to those. And you also had, I think, a few other comments there from the spews. And I, we're, we're always curious to see what these people are saying. We don't have access to that. You do. A little bit unfair. We need to make some technological changes. This area has always been of concern to me. It's a death trap. It has one road out of there. I assume that, and you mentioned you have small lots. I strongly approve you hooking this up for the people. I mean, I understand they have failed systems. Hopefully, they have grants so these people who can't afford to be part of this, and right now pay nothing in the sewer, unless they have to have their personal system pumped or maintained. So, there's a rather large financial change, potentially. Maybe there's even grants available to subsidize the cost those people. When it comes time to infill, it's mentioned in there. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't get all of John Miller's quite lengthy report there. I was in and out. But there, there are major concerns regarding not understanding what sea level rise might do. It was mentioned there's safe harbor out there, and, and I kind of checked into that, and that's kind of iffy out there. I'll be honest with you. Where do those people go if there is a tsunami? Not sure. Allegedly, there was a tower that they could go up into at one time that was locked. I've always been someone who thinks you should basically take your wasted concrete and build something solid up that wouldn't liquefy underneath it where people could go. I just, I'm really concerned with that as a death trap out there, and I'd hate to see loss of life. In my opinion, that's kind of like a New Orleans thing. You gotta make decisions whether it's something that's really a good place to build or continue building or definitely add to. So, I'd caution regarding any kind of thing. And I, I do, do want to make sure that this isn't kind of a regressive thing where the, the people who can least afford it, all of a sudden, are gonna be paying, you know, seventy-five or eighty dollars a month into a process that they don't currently have. So, those are my main concerns on, on any of these projects on the Samoa Peninsula. That's been my concern all along on any development out there. So, thank you for my opportunity to speak on this topic.
Any other public comment on this issue? Seeing none, and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Well, this is, no, I don't want to inhibit further discussion, but for, I'll make a motion for the sake of discussion that we approve based on evidence in the staff report and public testimony. Make all the required findings and adopt the resolution recommending that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors find that CEQA does not apply to the preparation and adoption of a local coastal program by the county pursuant to Public Resources Code twenty-one oh eighty-nine and the CEQA Guideline Section fifteen to sixty-five A, and adopt the proposed LCP amendments, including amendments to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan and coasting coastal zoning regulations as well.
So we have a motion, and I see Brian has his hand up. I'm assuming that's.
I, I do want a second, but I'd also like to speak to one of the public comments, if I may. I just wanted to echo and agree with Mr. Swatzky about his comment, especially regarding the process by which the supplemental staff reports are put out there. I personally have a hard time tracking them, and they're emailed directly to me. But to make sure that I haven't missed any is really difficult. And I can imagine for the public, it's even more difficult, because I don't think they're on the email distribution list. So I feel like we need to have a process to make sure that the public is fully informed of the supplemental staff reports before they're expected to comment on an item. Thank you.
The director wanted to address this. He, he was going to, and then he decided not to. We're going to have the rest.
Thanks, Commissioner Mitchell. We do agree with the concern, and that is something we're working on. And we will work to create a place in the county website, in the Planning and Building Department website, so that all the supplementals are posted there. So that there is an index of all the supplementals there, so that everybody will have a complete record of everything that's been submitted after the time that the original staff report is published.
That seems like a great way to fix that. Thank you.
That's great. So we have a motion and a second on this issue? Is there any further discussion? Mike, go ahead.
I'd just like to comment that I think this is a good project to bring these failing systems into compliance and, and clean up the area to where we don't have problems in our, our bay with the oyster industry, the shellfish being very dependent upon the bay. So this I'd like to see get done sooner rather than later, not dragged out. So I'm, I'm happy to vote yes for this.
The other comments?
Through the chair. Could, could, we, Troy Nicolini is uniquely qualified to respond to both of the, the tsunami-related public comment and the rate-related public comment, and he has some additional follow-up information on monitoring, if you'd like to hear those.
Sure.
Yes, this is Troy again. So I was, I reached our treatment plan operator. He actually samples daily and submits the samples for assessment to the lab once a week. So it's even more frequent than I said earlier. Regarding the tsunami hazard, I understand how the public commenter feels about that. It turns out after, you know, very careful analysis by the State of California and tsunami mapping experts, we've actually seen the threat on the peninsula reduced. And there are now many high dunes all the way down into peninsula that are anticipated to never be overtopped by even the worst-case scenario tsunami. And when you look at the worst-case scenario, it doesn't leave a lot of dry land, but that's actually an extraordinarily unlikely case. So I live in Fairhaven. I'm considered a regional expert in tsunami hazard preparedness and tsunami analysis. I can tell you, I feel very safe living in Fairhaven now with the, the continued analysis and the much better information we have about the risk on the peninsula. So just wanted to mention that as well. Regarding the rate, you know, we, we have, we are committed, the, the C S D is committed to not forcing any resident to connect if they don't want to. We believe that with a good educational campaign, almost all community members will want to connect, primarily because of the potential impact of sea level rise and water table elevation and, and the failing subject systems that we expect in the next decade or so. But to, to the issue of someone suddenly having a monthly bill that they didn't have before, if a very old person who is not worried about living there for the next three generate, you know, three decades, really can't afford the bill and they don't want to connect, we won't force them to connect. So I just want to mention that. Thank you.
You, Troy, do you have any grant that you have, or the grants that you've applied for or that you're considering applying for to assist low-income families with the connection costs? Because sometimes that can be prohibited.
That is a great question. We are, we are moving forward under the premise that we will, the entire project, all the way to each residence will be funded. And we, we have some indications from the Water Quality Control Board staff that that is a likely scenario because of the severely disadvantaged nature of that community. So yes, that is, that is our plan.
Yeah, I, I had a similar project and, and basically gave them a deadline and said, it's free if you do it by this date, and then after that, it's going to cost you like seven thousand dollars. And so he brought it on board.
Right, that, that will be part of our educational campaign, right?
And one of the things that we did was we directional drilled all the connections so that we didn't have to tear up their fences and yards and all that. It turned out pretty, to be pretty good, because when you start looking at right-of-way, sometimes people have put, you know, their fence and their yard all the way past the right-of-way. And so it gets really contentious.
That is a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, we're kind of getting.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you, Troy. We're kind of adding new information and getting off track here. We have a motion and a second out there. Any other discussion before we call for the question? Seeing none, I will call for the question. Laura, please?
Alan Pongio?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the second topic, which is draft amendments to the Cannabis Dispensaries Ordinance. Take a staff report.
Good evening. My name's Lena Adler, and I'm the assigned planner for the draft amendments to the dispensary ordinance. So I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen here, provide you with the staff report. Okay, great. Are you guys able to see my screen?
Yes, we can.
All right, excellent. So what we have before the Commissioners tonight is a draft amendments to the dispensary ordinance. This was scheduled in December. And has been continued to tonight. The draft dispensary ordinance amendments really kind of fall, have two components to them. They apply to both the coastal and the inland ordinances. These proposed changes will affect code sections three-one-three dash five-five-point-three, which is the coastal dispensary ordinance, and code section three-one-four dash five-five-point-three, which is the inland dispensary ordinance. The first change that is being proposed is to adjust the hours of operation to conform to state law. So currently, our county's ordinance allows hours of operation between ten AM to seven PM. Subsequent changes to state law allows for hours of operation between six AM and ten PM. So this would be an additional seven hours of operation. So staff has included that change, that proposed change into the ordinance amendments. The second component of amendments to the dispensary ordinance is, does apply to both the coastal and inland ordinances. And it is to ensure the information is provided about the danger of cannabis use during pregnancy and breastfeeding. So this aligns with the Board of Supervisors Resolution number nineteen dash eighty-three, which was passed in August of two thousand nineteen. And the resolution requires that information be available to employees and clients of cannabis dispensaries. And the Department of Health and Human Services has created informational brochures, palm cards, and rack cards, so that this information is easily dispersed to both employees and, and clients of dispensaries. And my last slide really is just kind of a cleanup of an error that was included in our staff report. So Section D of the Environmental Review mentions accessory dwelling units in error. So I just, for the record, I just wanted to state that the dispensary ordinance amendments are exempt from CEQA per Section one-five-zero-five-zero C two and one-five-zero-six-zero C three. And the dispensary ordinance amendments in the coastal zone are exempt as CEQA does not apply to preparation and adoption of a local coastal program. So please disregard the mention of accessory dwelling units in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I did want to offer the ability to answer any questions or, or comments at this point in time. I also have the coastal and inland ordinance amendment documents available if any of the Commissioners would like to review specific ordinance language that's been included in these ordinance amendments. So that concludes my staff report, and we're happy to answer any questions that the Commissioners might have.
I have a question about the hours. Do you have hour limitations on other businesses in the county?
That's an excellent question. Maybe I can have some of... Michael, would, would you have any input on that topic?
The county stays out of regulating the hours of operation. In this case, however, the state has established controls over that, and so we are reflecting the state standards.
Mike, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, my, my question was on the same lines about the hours there. The reasoning behind going to the state level is to just comply with that. I believe bars have a certain hours that they have to be closed. Is that correct?
Well, our ordinance actually predates, was actually approved prior to the changes in, in the state, state law allowance for the hours. So our ordinance is, is a little older than the state provisions. So yeah, that's why we're, we're making those.
To bring it up to speed. But I believe the, the bar industry have a special hours that they can, they have to close up at two, I believe, if I recall back from my early days of getting out. And I think they cannot open until a certain time in the morning, too. So it's along those same lines, I believe.
Yes.
Any other questions for the staff? Well, seeing none, I will now open this up for public comment. It looks like we have, over there, we have Natalie DeLa, is our first caller. Yeah, go ahead, Natalie.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity. HCGA represents a handful of dispensaries that are operating within the county jurisdiction down in the Garberville area, coming up through the Myrtle Town area, as well as McKinleyville. And we reached out to the county on their behalf, because they asked us to help bring the Humboldt County dispensary ordinance, which was developed in two thousand sixteen, into conformance with state law. And specifically, it is to provide some of these dispensaries with increased flexibility, specifically like in the summertime when it doesn't get dark until nine PM, and they have to close at seven PM. And so really, what this dispensary amendment for the hours of operation does is it gives dispensary owners the opportunity to have increased flexibility to meet their consumers' needs, dependent on their location, and which can then increase funds that come in through the store, which increases funds into the county's or into the state's tax coffers, employee coffers as well. And so we really think that this is a good opportunity for the county to bring this dispensary ordinance into two thousand twenty-one. And with that, I'd like to say thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Melanie. Second caller is Kent Swatzky.
Kent Swatzky here. This is an interesting one. And, and our, our current hours already do conform to state regulations. Anything less than six to ten would be conforming. I'm not aware, after speaking with staff, of any dispensaries that actually are within the coastal zone. I, I, I'll drop back to that in just a second. I wanted to make a point here, and this is one of the reasons why you see me wanting to curb the use of this particular thing within our society in general. And it, it's about the dangers of cannabis among, during pregnancy and while breastfeeding. I strongly support you getting this out to people. My understanding is that THC impairment is a lot like, basically alcohol impairment. And we, we've seen, we have some of the highest, the highest learning disabilities and all kinds of, of the problems with our young children here. And if people don't understand the negativity of THC at these younger ages, and not just that, but while the brain forms to a certain age. And it's just about impossible to, to keep people not to do this during pregnancy. And a lot of them just go ahead and do it while they're breastfeeding. And so that's part of my angst regarding the, the hours of six to ten. You know, with the adults, I don't care if they want to shake and bake, you know, wake and bake, or whatever you want to call it in the morning, you know, at six o'clock. And, and it's been, it's been told to me, maybe people have a hard time counting employees or whatever, getting away from work to get their stuff, so that they can get their day on. To be quite honest with you, I don't have problems with the THC impairment, because I'm not that way, and it just makes my business dealings that much easier to do. So I just always want you to be informed as far as, and that's where my opinion is coming on this particular product. And I will be, I will be that same old broken record. I probably, as long as I can still play in the needle turns or the, the, the record player turns and my needle's on it. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on this one. And please let the people know the implications or the complications and whatnot we have from, from the breastfeeding and during pregnancy.
Thank you. Yep. Public speaker thirty fifty-three.
Good evening. Thomas Mulder here. Just a response, I wasn't actually going to comment on this one. Personal information, as far as I'm aware, my mother smoked marijuana for nausea the whole time she was pregnant with me and when I breastfed. I'm, I might be slow, but I'm not that slow. So it, you know, some of us can turn out normal. I'm not a doctor or professional, but I support the ordinance before you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Any other public, like, comment on this one? Seeing none, I will close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission. I show one hand, but I don't see who it is.
That's my hand, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to say I'm ready to make a motion as soon as my fellow Commissioners have had the opportunity to give their comments.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to move that based on the evidence in the staff report and public testimony, that we adopt the resolution recommending that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors find that the proposed ordinance is exempt from the California environment. find that the proposed ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Sections two one zero eight zero point five and two one zero eight zero point nine of the Public Resources Code and one five two six five of the State CEQA Guidelines, and that the Board of Supervisors adopt the cannabis dispensary ordinance amendments. Thank you.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the questions.
Laura. Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Affirmative.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Melanie McCaver.
Yes.
Motion carries to Madeline. Thank you, everyone. Let's move on to number three and hopefully get through this one quickly. Ancient Truth Incorporated, conditional use permit in the Bridgeville area. We'll take a staff report, please.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'll clear my screen now. So I'm Portia Slosado, the assigned planner for this project. This is an application for a conditional use permit for Ancient Truth Inc., which was continued from the November nineteenth hearing to reevaluate the pre-existing cultivation square footage and type, and then again continued on December seventeenth due to a lack of sufficient time to present during the hearing. The permit was proposed under the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance. The proposed project is located off Highway thirty-six at thirteen seventy Little therapy Creek Road in Bridgeville. The parcel is approximately one hundred and sixty acres in size with a land use designation of timberland and zoned agricultural exclusive and timberland production zone. The conditional use permit is to allow the continued operation in existing, of existing twenty-two thousand square feet mixed light and forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet of existing outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. Two cultivation cycles per year are proposed and up to ten employees are expected. Most recently, the county and the applicant's attorney revisited the cultivation area verification process and determined that the pre-existing amount was nineteen thousand eight hundred and ten square feet of mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation prior to January first two thousand and sixteen. Several of the originally claimed pre-existing cultivation areas were of lesser square footage than what was claimed initially, and some were off parcel. You can see that here in this diagram where the X's are off parcel. The project has been conditioned in condition number four to produce a cohesive cultivation operations plan to the revised site plan that reflects the approved cultivation type and square footage supported by the county for approval. Please note that the resolution was revised and recommended approval for nineteen thousand eight hundred and ten square feet of mixed light. Here is a revised site plan for the project submitted to the county by the agent December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Please refer to the supplemental for this item, which is F three to examine the plan. In green are the relocated pre-existing cultivation areas that are proposed. And you can see here where the cultivation is proposed, as well as the six hundred foot setbacks, which are in yellow, yellow circles. The parcel has four Class Two water courses and six Class Three water courses, and cannabis cultivation is at least a hundred feet from the Class Two and fifty feet from the Class In green here are the proposed cultivation areas. The blue circles indicate water storage tanks. The orange rectangles here and here are where the proposed generators will be located. The ancillary propagation space is a screen-hatched rectangle. And the project parcel contains five existing buildings. The water source is from two permitted wells. The water storage capacity totals twenty-four thousand three hundred gallons. There is also a two hundred, twenty-five hundred gallon hard tank designated for fire suppression that is proposed. The projected annual water usage is six hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred gallons, but this estimate will be updated with the revisions required within the conditions of approval. Processing is proposed to occur off-site with a third-party licensed processing facility until the proposed twenty-five hundred square foot on-site processing facility is permitted and constructed. Again, up to ten employees, and the power currently, and that is proposed, is with two generators housed in sound dampening structures. One is forty-five kilowatts, the other is eighty-five kilowatts. The sound dampening structures are going to keep the decimal level under, below fifty decimals at a hundred feet. And please take note that there are errors in the staff report where three and four generators are referenced, and these are remnants of previously proposed project, a previously proposed project application from the previous applicant. This is, this project has been transferred to the new applicant. The applicant proposes to have on-grid power or another sustainable source installed by two thousand and twenty-one. Until a sustainable source is installed on-site, power to the parcel will continue to be provided by the two generators. The generators will be in operation from February to November for the lights and fumes within the greenhouses and for drying cannabis. All greenhouse, all generators will be housed in the containment structures, as previously stated, and at least two hundred feet from all Class One and Class Two water courses. In addition to the site plan and the cultivation operations plan, all these documents listed here provided evidence that the project is consistent with the mitigated negative declaration toward the CMMLEO, and an addendum was prepared for this project and is included in the staff It's a recommendation of staff that the planning commission find the project consistent with the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration under the CEQA guidelines, make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, adopt the revised resolution approving the conditional use permit as recommended by the staff with the removal of condition of approval number twenty, which is no longer relevant because it, it references, I can read it to you. It references the previously, the previous cultivation area verification square footage that was calculated from, by the county and CDFW. But since then, we've looked at it again and did the, and agreed that it was the nineteen thousand eight hundred and ten square feet of mixed light. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions for staff?
My first question is about power, and we've had this discussion on almost every one, but it says proposed to have renewable energy by two thousand and twenty-one, and I think it should be mandated because proposed can slip away to never. So I think that we should mandate a deadline, you know, not necessarily two thousand and twenty-one, but something that's consistent with other mandates that we've put in there for non-generator usage because of fire hazards and the fumes. The other thing, and it's related but not related, but, and, you know, maybe the director can help just ease my mind on something. There's an awful lot of accidents on Highway thirty-six, and as you increase the usage of that highway, I wonder if, has there been a route report? It's a state highway, I'm assuming, and has there been a hazard report on reduction of accidents and deaths on that highway? Because if we continue to increase the usage, you know, for employees and others, I'd like to see what's being proposed to reduce the accidents and deaths on that highway.
Mr. Chair?
So that is a good question. And when we're talking about adding trips, that becomes very, very relevant. One of the things I would remind the commission of is this is an existing use, so this is technically not an addition of trips. This is something that is an ongoing use that we're now permitting. So from a CEQA perspective, from a baseline perspective, those trips all exist. In direct answer to some of the other part of your questions, I haven't seen a report identifying any accident reductions. We are all aware that there have been a significant amount of roadwork going on out there, straightening curves and making the road better. We anticipate that that will be improving the situation.
One of the things that we did, because we have, you know, dangerous highways on the York Reservation, is we requested the state through their own planning department to prepare a hazard report for one sixty-nine, and they did that at their own expense. And they actually went down the road identifying where accidents had occurred and talked to people about the causes of those accidents and came up with some really good recommendations. You know, a lot of it was community-based, you know, and I'm not proposing that we not approve this because of the highway. I'm just saying that I'm concerned as we continue to increase that, you know, I don't know what's causing the accidents, if it's the road, if it's people that are high or intoxicated, or, you know, what is the issue? But I think that, you know, we need to, maybe on a side note, ask the roads department to put in a request for that type of report, or maybe they already have it and they can share it with us.
Any other commissioners that have questions for staff? Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I was understanding correctly what staff was saying about not applying anymore. I'm looking at the recommendations. Was that in attachment one? I'm looking at number twenty, I believe, on page nineteen of the staff report? Is that, or twenty, I mean, page nineteen, yeah. Is that the one that is no longer applicable because it was outside of the parcel?
Yeah, through the chair, yes, that was, number twenty is not applicable.
So that's where it was going to have thirteen thousand square feet of full sun only outdoor?
The applicant was able to come up with additional aerial imagery that showed that there were greenhouses, which indicated mixed light prior to January first, two thousand and sixteen.
So it is still in there, then?
Through the chair, if I could just, Commissioner Newman, we are proposing to strike that condition because that was left over from a previous iteration of the project that was based on a previous disagreement with the applicant about the previous cultivation area that existed. And so we ended up agreeing with the applicant to use a different base year that was before two thousand and sixteen to credit them for the pre-existing cultivation. That increased their allowance for the mixed light and obviously reduced the amount of full sun cultivation that we believe existed in that year. And so that's no longer applicable. That's why we are proposing to strike it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Oh, Brian, I'm not seeing it come up. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add on to Peggy's comment regarding the generator usage. It's confusing to me because it says that they'll be done by two thousand and twenty-one, which we're already there. So if the intention is to read that they'll be done by November of two thousand and twenty-one, I agree with her that we should just state that and not leave it vague and ambiguous as to what they're going to do. The current language with proposed is not acceptable. That's it, thank you.
Any other commissioners that have any questions? Seeing none, I will open this up for public comment, and the first caller is Kent Swatzky. Number two is Madeline DeLaat this time. Go ahead, Kent.
Yeah, I just, I had, this is extremely confusing to me exactly what you're permitting because it's called Ancient Truth Inc., but I'm not seeing the numbers here on what's agenda is for what you're actually permitting. And I can't quite understand, I thought CEQA was a picture of existing uses right at the time when this thing came in, whatever that cutoff date was. And I can't see how if they had greenhouses prior to that and they'd been taken down or they didn't show up in imagery, you could go back a year or five years or ten years and take a CEQA picture and say that's the existing. I can't understand how staff CEQA-wise can justify that, but maybe I'm not understanding how CEQA works. I did strongly support you pinning down the exact thing, November, of course, of two thousand and twenty-one is what they've agreed to. So whether it be, it says specifically Pacific Gas and Electric there. So I don't have a problem personally with you saying Pacific Gas and Electric and/or, you know, solar or whatever we want to use as far as an acceptable thing for being environmentally friendly. I always have a problem, especially in an area where you have so many blue lines, so many cricks, it's such a unique habitat. When you have two wells that are obviously drawing from all those things, there's no way it can't be. And I have no indication here, not having read the, whatever, probably seventy-page staff report, which doesn't seem to be consistent with the rest of this, and that always troubles me. But, so you have these two wells, but you only have storage with a total of twenty-four thousand three hundred with six hundred, six hundred and thirty-one eight gallons per year. I really would like to make sure that they were only pulling those during, from those wells during the non-furbertance time period and then would store the water as necessary for their thing. There seems to be a policy we've kind of had on forbearance, and there seems to be a real disconnect or an over-connect between our water sources and wells and what that actually draws down out of the, what I refer to as Mother Nature's sponge. So I don't know, I would, I would, hopefully, maybe the applicant would be willing to put in storage sufficient to handle their season there, or maybe switch over to some other form of storage coming off the greenhouses, or they seem to have a two thousand five hundred square foot existing building and basically disconnect from those wells whenever we can. So this is a one point oh or a two point oh? I'm not understanding. I did wish to make comment to staff. I could not tell from your map where existing greenhouses were in the pictures, and those pictures, you should always have the picture of it. What you're saying has been determined to be existing square footage as of the cutoff date, which would be applicable to CEQA. But maybe I'm not as smart as some other people, but that's just the way I understand the process should be, not those options. Thanks for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Now, Madeline DeLaat, please.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak and to speak in support of Ancient Truth, which is one of our members. in support of Ancient Truth, which is one of our members. And just, I do have to say and agree, actually, with Kent, this was one of the more confusing staff reports that I've read. And the first executive description makes it look like there's 65,560 square feet of cultivation that's being proposed, when in fact, it's 19,810, and that's not even found until page four of the staff report. So just want to flag that this was a very confusing report. And also, to Commissioner Mitchell's point, I think it does say that they would be off generators by 2021, which is, of course, this year. And to state that two weeks ago, Reed Mountain Farms was given three years to come off of its generator use. And we've kind of had this maybe two years, maybe three years. I would ask the commission to just set us a straight time. Three years is really a useful amount of time for applicants to build either the sufficient solar they need or to bring PG&E in. And so, yeah, I hope that clarification is received and that people understand what this project actually is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Thomas Mulder.
Good evening, Thomas Mulder. I will agree that it was a little confusing trying to follow and read through this. My comments are just as far as the baseline sequel. I heard some comments about needing a study for traffic for actually employees that were already included in that baseline sequence. So I think we need to remember that purview of, you know, existing versus new as far as trying to require other studies and reports. As far as generator use, like, I'm reading it's got three generators, 100 KW and 250KWs. Not that I'm a big supporter of large generator-powered scenes, but that was the rules in the CCMLUO, which is ordinance 1.0 from what I'm reading in the staff report. So it's interesting that these conditions of approval keep coming up as added requirements. Me personally, if I were in the shoes of coming before the planning commission right now, I would appeal this to the board of supervisors if that condition was put on my project because it is different than the rules that were applied when I submitted my application, if I was the applicant in those things. So I think there needs to be some sort of give and take in that aspect. I mean, the environmental aspect in me doesn't love it, but those were the rules when the applicants came forward. So I think there should, there needs to be some sort of possibly tax incentive or credit. I've heard of people saying ideas of, you know, if I'm going to go away from mixed light, maybe I get a two-for-one, like, two times square footage on the existing to go outdoor under county terms. Just some thoughts out there. You know, these are different rules being put on. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Next caller is-
Can I respond to his comment? I didn't ask that another study be put on there for the roads. I just want to make sure, because I think he misunderstood my comment.
We're not, this is public comment, so we're not going to go back and forth. Go ahead, Public 7108.
Hi, this is Bonnie Blackmary. And I noticed that three, the three applications for cannabis grows here at the planning commission all are reliant on wells. And one out of two that went before the zoning administrator. So that's four out of five cannabis operations that are relying on well water. And I'm really concerned about the impact. And all this came down on forbearance and how people needed to store their water. And I feel like the wells are being used to get around the forbearance. And I'm really concerned about the impact of having all these big growth scenes taking all this water out. We're in a drought, and the water table, to think that you're going to draw that water out, and it's not going to affect the springs and creeks and the rivers in the area, I just don't understand. And I'm also against all this generator use. It's the county we went through, we didn't want to have indoor grows using generators. And now we've got all this mixed light using generators, doing the same kind of stuff that they would be doing inside. So I'd like to limit that as much as possible, because there's a lot of environmental impacts that aren't really dealt with, because 50, 60 decibels is pretty darn loud when you're out in the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next caller is Neil Lap.
Thank you, Commission. I am an attorney for the applicant, Ancient Truth. And I just wanted to respond to a couple of the comments from commissioners and the public. The first was in regard to PG&E. My understanding is that the applicants did get a quote from PG&E on the cost to make a connection to the property, and it came in at around $700,000. And he was still interested in pursuing that. I do think three to five years would be a realistic timeline to compel that, if it's added as a condition of approval to this project. Because it's, I believe if PG&E were present, they would even respond at this point, that it's unrealistic to implement that this year by November. And then addressing the issue of the wells in use, my understanding, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the applicant has to evidence that any well usage is non-hydrologically connected to surface water and any creeks. And so my understanding here is that's the case, that these wells have been shown to be drawing from deep groundwater that is not hydrologically connected to either the creeks or the rivers that are in proximity. And so concerns in that regard should be alleviated. Thank you.
Next caller is Public 2223. Got unmuted. There you go.
Good evening. Craig Johnson from Southern Humboldt. And I would like to comment on what I keep seeing, and that is this bait and switch. It's really important for folks that came into compliance to be able to move forward without the hurdles being moved higher and higher with the generator clause being moved around on them. I personally am a sun-grown farm and feel that is the way to grow cannabis. But for many folks, that was a different reality. And we need to incentivize, incentivize the movement of that after the fact, because we've already voted and we've already brought a policy forth through the county. So I think it's important to get these permits through and then offer some sort of incentive program like Thomas Mulder was speaking to. Thank you. And that's my comment.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Steve Brittenstein. I hope I didn't butcher that too bad. Go ahead, Steve. Got to unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Steve Brittenstein. I'm the consultant for the applicant, and just want to make a quick comment about the water use. That was just one thing I noticed hadn't been updated since the cultivation area that is proposed was dramatically reduced. We're not anticipating 600,000-plus gallons per year. It's probably going to look more like 200,000 gallons, now that we're growing only 19,000 square feet. And there are already conditions of approval in place for monitoring annually the drawdown in the wells. So I'm not concerned about the water use of this parcel and think it should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public commenters? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission for deliberation. Before the commission starts to deliberate, it seems, based upon the comments I've heard so far, that there is a desire to see a condition requiring a transfer from generator use to PG&E use. The applicant seems to have agreed to that in a three- to five-year period. Would rec, and since that proposal currently is in the applicant's project description, if that's something that the commission wants to do, we'd recommend adding a new condition to state that the transfer from generator use to PG&E power be completed by December 31st of 2016. Or, I'm sorry, 2025. I took five years off. All right. Thank you, Director. So any discussion from the commission? Taking a shot at the motion? See anybody? Can everybody go at once?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to move that we find the planning commission is considered the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration adopted for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance. Adopt the resolution, make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, and approve the proposed Ancient Truth Incorporated conditional use permit subject to recommended conditions, including changing the generator changeover to PG&E by December 31st, 2025.
And I will second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask Laura to ask the question. Oh, I'm sorry. Ronnie?
I just wanted to say, do we need to put in the motion, the revised resolution, to adopt the revised resolution? It was in the staff report. Or is it fine the way it is?
The director's saying yes, so let's add that to the motion.
So we'll, we'll change it to revise.
Second agrees with that?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Laura, ask the question, please.
Alan Boncio?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Motion carries. Thank you, Laura. Let's see if we can get through one more, and then we'll take a break. We have, we're at the last one in this section, and it is the Emerald Coast Genetics Incorporated Conditional Use Permit, special permit in the Fickle Hill Road Neeland area. Staff report, please.
Yes, let me just share my screen here. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Christopher Alberts, and I'll be presenting the Emerald Coast Genetics Conditional Use Permit. The proposed project is for 11,440 square feet of mixed light cultivation. The project also includes a special permit for a setback reduction from public lands owned by the city of Arcata. Processing such as drying and curing will occur on-site in the existing 1,325 square foot barn. There'll be a maximum of two employees working on-site, and trimming will occur off-site at a licensed processing facility. Power will be provided by PG&E. However, the applicant does have a backup generator on-site that will be utilized for emergency purposes only. The project is located in the Neeland area. The parcel is accessed from a private driveway off of Fickle Hill Road. Fickle Hill Road is on the county approved list of roads that meet or meet the equivalence or to a road category for standard or cannabis projects. This is a copy of the applicant's site map. The cultivation areas are outlined in green. Propagation is outlined in the tan color. Processed scene is outlined in yellow. And the water storage are located on the north side of the map with the blue circles. The well is located with a blue triangle, and the red outline identifies a greenhouse that will be removed. There are no mapped habitat for any threatened or endangered species of concern within the cultivation site. However, there is a northern spotted owl activity center located approximately 0.23 miles northwest from the project site. There is also marble muret habitat located approximately 5.28 miles south from the project site. Noise and light anti-nation measures are required as a condition of approval for the project. The water source is an onsite permanent well. Staff has determined that the well is not hydrologically connected to any surface water. Based on the evidence from the well logs submitted by the applicant that states that the well is 220 feet in depth, and penetrates through brown clay, cemented sand, and sandstone. The well is also approximately 1,872 feet in elevation, and the nearest surface water is approximately 0.20 miles east, which is a Class III tributary to the Jacoby Creek. As I stated earlier, the project does involve a special permit for a setback reduction. Cultivation is located approximately 270 feet from the Jacoby Creek Forest. However, the project is consistent with the Arcata Community Forest and Jacoby Creek Forest Management Plan. The project also involved a timber conversion in 2009. The applicant has submitted a less than three-acre conversion that was approved by the county and a restocking And the applicant also submitted a settlement agreement that, with the Humboldt Redwood Company, that is allowing for restocking to take place in the checkered area on the Staff recommends that the planning commission finds the project consistent with the mitigated negative declaration adopted for the CMMLUO, to make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit, and to adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit and special permit subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
Oh, sorry. Melanie put her hand up first, and I was looking. I'll wait for Melanie.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Well, thanks, Commissioner Levy. I just, I brought this up before. The, and it was great for a while. But, and it's not a big deal, because, you know, I can do the math myself. But I've noticed it's been slipping, the, putting the water usage in gallons per square feet. So if staff could really do that, again, it's not so much for us, but for the public, it's just a little bit easier to see that in the overview. So, for example, this one is 10- for example, this one is 10.78 gallons per square feet. And also the one coming up next is 18.41 per square feet. And so it's a little bit helpful, you know, to have those values. So you can say, okay, well, why is this one 10.8 per square feet? And why is this one 18.4? You know, so on and so forth. So I just, I just like to bring that up again to, to just remind everyone that it's a little bit more useful for everybody to have those values there in the summaries. Thanks.
Thank you. Noah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you, Christopher. I, I am unclear from the staff report whether, what exactly the totality of the city of Arcata's concerns or requests were. You know, you mentioned that they request the setback of 150 feet. That they request restocking of an area that had been converted, I guess, right up to the boundary of the, or, or within, very close to, within the, the buffer of the boundary of the community forest. I, I guess my question right off the bat is, you know, there's no, there's no comment letter from the city of Arcata that I saw. So I'm really just curious what the posture of the city of Arcata is towards this project and if they in fact are satisfied by, um by the behaviors of this landowner in mitigating the conversion or the, the cleared areas that border the community forest.
Um, yeah, from my understanding, there was a public hearing held with the city of Arcata regarding this project where they discussed their concerns regarding the timber conversion. From that meeting, they settled on a restocking plan. And I believe, and Cliff, if you could help me out, I think you are a lot more familiar with this meeting. However, I did speak with the city of Arcata this week prior to this meeting. And they did not express any concerns regarding this project based on the fact that their concerns have already been mitigated with the applicant.
Okay. Well, thank you. If, if Cliff has more about it, I'd be, I'd be curious, but that was responsive to my, to my question. Thanks.
Sure. Commissioner Levy, I'll just go ahead and add, I, I was, I attended two meetings with the city of Arcata's Forest Management Committee on this project. They did, they did express concern just mainly relative to commercial cannabis in TPZ. And adjacent TPZ and, and the impact that that could have on forest management. And so ultimately, they did make a recommendation to to the county to approve this project, subject to those conditions, the 150 foot setback, replanting some, some timber species in there, and then a no build easement within that same area. And so that actually was then discussed and reviewed by the city council of the city of Arcata. And they made the, they agreed with the Forest Management Committee and made that recommendation to the county. Excuse me, I do apologize if that is not attached in the staff report. That was intended to be provided to, to everybody, to the commissioners.
And I, I should apologize if I missed it because there was just a lot here. I, I had to skim through some stuff, but thank you, Mr. Johnson. That was great. Okay.
Thank you, Noah. Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, this is Brian. I just wanted to ask about the spotted owl. It sounded like it was in close proximity to the site and I was wondering what sort of ongoing owl studies or protections there will be if there are spotted owls in the direct vicinity.
Um, so the applicant has done some northern spotted owl studies on the site in which they, the survey did include that the, there's a very low likelihood that spotted owls would adversely be affected from their cultivation operation. The applicant is going to be using light and noise anti-nation measures as ongoing condition of approval. The power source is from PG&E. And the generators are anticipated to be used unless it is emergency only. The applicant will be covering his greenhouses. He did say to me that he has never once seen a lightly coming from his greenhouses, however. And so how that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will open this up for public comment. And see if we have anybody. Yep, we do. Kent, go ahead. Go ahead, Kent. And unmute yourself.
Took me a while to unmute. I apologize. This is one of those locations that is within a quarter of a mile of spotted owl. Now that spotted owl probably was there, could have been there, potentially could have been there in that exact habitat, exactly where this process is taking place and has been driven out by a quarter of a mile. Prime, prime. That's the reason the city of Arcata took this over and has their things for this. And, and you, you, so you're allow cultivation within the 150 feet of the public land. Or maybe this report's wrong again. I'm having a real hard time with the inconsistencies between what I pull up for the agenda. This agenda is put out a few, a few days ago and yet it cannot be accurate. I, I don't understand that at all. Cause I don't have time to do all these other, other things. This is an area where you again have a, a 2,640 square foot permitted shop which should easily be able to, to store the water required for this size, size of a grow onsite, no matter what. If you're going to put this terrible project through. And I don't understand why this size grow would need an employee break room. This should be a Thomas Mulder project where these people are onsite, living there, doing what they're doing, improving the forest, turning it into old growth forest and are rewarded by having a little bit of money to facilitate what Thomas and his family does there. I, I don't understand why this is in this manner, why the water cannot be stored. I appreciate the admission that somehow or another this water gets down to the Jacoby Creek watershed because of its height, even though the well is at its level, and, and that is, is a premium admission by your staff. Pay attention to what they said. And Noah, this sounds like it's going to the Jacoby Creek watershed or not. The water either goes there or it doesn't. So I just have major concerns about any project this close. And why would you have an exception for a setback reduction from the public land? May, maybe there, maybe, I know Marc Andre is no longer there. Maybe they were happy with the mitigation. But, but from the public perception, this is just not a place for this, for this to take place, never should have been. And again, as, as from the environmental aspect, as far as epic and all these things, I would hope they would really start looking at these kind of projects and just saying no. Because I have not seen that. And there's a whole bunch of opinions out there and I hate to, hate to be disparaging regarding a, a group that I worked with and funded in the past. But there's just, there doesn't seem to be any responsibility coming from the environmental community. I don't know why I have to do it. Why do I have to be the, the one voice for the environment and mother nature out there? Or there's a few other people, I, I will admit that. Regarding permits. And I could be corrected by, uh, your, your, John Ford here. If, if I get a permit, basically, I'll, I'll catch this one on another topic. So anyway, thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Kent. Uh, next caller is Charles Caldwell.
Hello, this is Charlie Caldwell. I'm a local resident. And I've actually seen the improvements on this property since at least for over the last year and a half. And both the owner and the CEO that's running the project have a very solid respect for the environment and taking care of this property and making it efficient. And they are responsible for the community and the environment. So, you know, I, I understand Kent's concern with all of this stuff, but these are good people trying to do the right thing that are not only trying to do the right thing there, but personally supporting some of our local youth in the projects that we're trying to do here in Humboldt County with things like the skate parks and BMX tracks. So I'm just putting my two cents in. They are good people. They are trying to do the right thing, like most of the families out here doing this type of work that has been legalized in the state of California. They're trying to meet the regulations, trying to meet the requirements. That's all I have. Thank you very much for letting me share.
Thank you. Next caller is Brian Andrus.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I would just like to touch upon how I have worked with the Zimmermans since 2017 and it has been a great pleasure to be on this operation. The PG&E delivery for power has made it so that it's very quiet out on the mountain, which is a huge plus. Cause I've been to other operations and scenes where you have multiple generators, gas cans is just a mess. And this is very clean and quiet and really respectful for the nature around there. And I've helped personally do erosion control and maintenance on his greenhouses and he uses ten year plastic films and all these long-term like good for the environmental goals. And just to touch a little bit on the spotted owl uh, topic, the little three acre conversion they did is a postage stamp compared to the 160 acre logging operation that HRC is currently doing this year on the spotted owl territory. And so it's just, it's frustrating to see the cannabis farm get the negative limelight for spotted owl when really it's timber harvesting of 160 acre clear cuts doing the real damage here. And I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers? Seeing none, I will close the pubs, public comment section of this and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. So, does anybody have any questions or discussion on this or want to make a motion? Let's see any hands going up. All right. Melanie, I see you have your hand up.
I'm sorry.
Melanie, Melanie beat you.
No, good. Thank you, Melanie.
Was it to make a motion?
Yeah, if that's what you want, or do you have something you'd like to talk about?
Oh, I, I, I wondered if Commissioner Levy had a question or comment or discussion item or?
No, thank you, Melanie. Commissioner McCaver, I was just gonna move, make a motion.
Oh, okay. Great. All right. So I'll motion to approve the Emerald Coast Genetics Conditional Use Permit, Special Permit Record Number PLN 10559 APN 314131033 on 12395 Fickle Hill Road in the Neeland area. And, um yeah, that's, that's it.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second to that motion.
I will second that motion.
So your motion is second. Any discussion on the motion?
Is this another revision of that as well? From the original staff report?
The director says yes. So is that your motion okay with that, Melanie, that it's a revision? As it's reflected in the supplemental, the director says.
Right.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will ask Laura to ask the question.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Affirmative.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimous. With that, we got through all those rather timely. So let's take a quick five minute break and then we will come back and start the public hearings. So. All right, everybody. Welcome back. The next section is section G, the public hearings. And the first item will be the industrial hemp land use ordinance. We will take the staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Lana Adler and I am the assigned planner for the industrial hemp ordinance. Let me go ahead and share my screen and get the staff report started for you. So, um, I'll provide a brief staff report on the industrial hemp draft ordinance. As part of my staff report tonight, I'll be reviewing the background of the industrial hemp temporary moratorium, actions from previous hearings, the completion of the small cultivator amendments, the moratorium in place through May 10th, 2021. I'll also do a brief overview of the proposed draft ordinance and comments that we have received from the Coastal Commission and the staff responses to those comments. Background on the industrial hemp moratorium. The board directed staff to begin public outreach and drafting industrial hemp ordinance in 2019. In April and May of 2019, public workshops and public hearings were held to begin the work on a draft industrial hemp ordinance. We received kind of two divergent comments through that process. There was an expressed interest in industrial hemp for the emerging CBD market, particularly for small legacy cannabis farmers. But we also heard concerns of impacts on can, on the cannabis industry, concerns about cross pollination, introduction of new pests and pathogens. As, so the board directed staff to work on a draft amendments to the cannabis ordinance in order to ease the pathway for small farmers to navigate the permitting process. Because it was clear that a lot of the people that attended the public workshops felt that the commercial cannabis land use ordinance was, was difficult to navigate. And they saw that industrial hemp might be an easier pathway for cultivation, especially in the CBD marketplace. So sta, as a result, staff drafted a small cultivator amendments to the commercial cannabis land use ordinance and those were, excuse me, adopted by the board in October at 2020. And as part of that, the board extended the temporary moratorium on industrial hemp cultivation through May 10th, 2021. So our efforts to work on in ordinance for industrial hemp cultivation continued. We have drafted the ordinance which does continue a prohibition on industrial hemp with the exception of College of the Redwoods. So it continues that conservative approach of prohibiting industrial hemp cultivation. CR would be required to seek a special permit to move forward with the industrial hemp program for research and educational purposes. And we are looking to ensure that we finalize a permanent industrial hemp ordinance prior to the expiration of the temporary moratorium coming up in May. to the expiration of the temporary moratorium coming up in May. We did receive comments from the Coastal Commission as part of this effort. The industrial hemp ordinance would be applicable both in the coastal and inland areas of the county. The supplemental that you've received as part of your packets tonight does include those comments and staff responses. Because CR is in the coastal zone, the Coastal Commission did have some concerns about industrial hemp cultivation and impacts to coastal resources. So we've just prepared a few of the responses, staff responses to comments that the Coastal Commission did pose. And response number one is in reference to the Coastal Commission's concern about the CR property representing a change in use to allow industrial hemp. And staff's response to that is to consider applying performance standards for cannabis cultivation in, as the cannabis, that's already contained within the cannabis ordinance, to industrial hemp cultivation at CR. Another comment that we received from the Coastal Commission, it was in regard to a non-conforming use of CR and if it raised any issues with the county's ability to issue a special permit for use of industrial hemp. And as a result, staff has responded that maybe it would, that that would be resolved by requiring a conditional use permit for industrial hemp at CR rather than a special And one of the final comments we wanted to ensure that we discussed was about the map that we included in the staff report showing the CR property. They, the Coastal Commission recommended providing some additional mapping. And so staff's response to that was to consider inserting a map of the parcels into the ordinance rather than just referencing the parcel layer in our current web GIS. That really concludes my staff presentation. Any questions or comments are welcome. I do also have the Industrial Hemp Ordinance document available if we'd like to look at any specific ordinance language there. And I, as a final slide, I have included a map of the College of the Redwoods campus area. This is also in the staff report, but I thought it might be a good thing to have available for any kind of additional discussion. So that concludes my staff report and, you know, we're happy to answer or address any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Any questions from the commission of staff? See any hands up? Okay. Go with that. I will open it up for public comment then and see if the public have any comments. Don't see any hands up there. Give them a sec. We got one. Ross Gordon, please. Ross, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners, for considering this item and for the opportunity to speak. My name is Russ Gordon. I'm Policy Director with Humboldt County Growers Alliance. I want to really thank county staff and the Commissioners for their consideration on this issue over the course of several years now. As staff mentioned, there's been really multi-year process of public outreach and public hearings that's occurred over this issue, which I think has enabled the recommendations before you today from staff, which I think are good recommendations. I think the staff report, and we think the staff report is accurate, as it pertains to issues with cross pollination and with potential introduction of pests and pathogens. And HCG supports the recommendations that are in the staff report.
The next caller is Public 4205. If to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, staff and Commissioners, for your work on stabilizing agriculture in Humboldt County, their bolster. I just want to encourage the commission to choose the alternative recommendation to allow for an exemption for established agricultural research institutions to cultivate for research purposes, with the caveat that the parcel eligible for study to be expanded beyond CR's Tompkins Hill property. I mean, they have an agricultural research parcel in Shively that doesn't make sense while that would not be included, or other institutions. Taken from one of the many reports produced by Humboldt Department of Agriculture, it says Humboldt County has, agriculture has historically been one of the major resources in Humboldt County, approximately 690,000 acres, or nearly a third of the total land area in the county, is directed to some type of agricultural use. About 67,000 acres of land is classified as being under intensive farming, harvested crop land and crop land used only for pasture, while estimated 605,000 acres of land is used primarily for grazing-related purposes. The high rainfall, fertility of soil, marine climate, and soil depth make some of the county's agriculture land highly productive. The more profitable intensive agricultural practices generally occur on more fertile land on manageable parcels with ample water supply. Although upland grazing is a prominent agricultural practice in Humboldt County and requires vast acreage for profitability, it tends to involve non-prime quality land in the remote areas which are subjected to competition from possibly competing land uses. And this was from a report in 2006 that listed the top five crops by value as timber at 172 million, nursery at 50 million, milk at 30 million, cattle at 20 million, pasture at 9 million, filling $280 million. But what was left out of this report was cannabis cultivation, the proverbial elephant in the room, the 2018 Farm Act federally legalized hemp, and 2016 Prop 64 established taxation regulations for controlled substance found in cannabis or THC, remaining a Schedule I controlled substance and not recognized by the state of California as agriculture, but instead as a commercial byproduct. This hemp ordinance gets to the root of the issue here in Humboldt County, two that I see. One is industrial agriculture versus barriers to entry for small farmers and the Controlled Substance Act. As to timber and fishing industries, we've seen that industrialization of natural resource extraction is harmful effects on the local communities and the environment. And the arrival of out-of-area junk bond tycoon signaled the liquidation of our forests and the export of those profits. The scale and standard operating procedures employed by industrial seed industries is what caused the harm. We see even on this meeting's agenda before the Planning Commission, the approval of what locals consider to be large-scale industrial natural resource extraction operations. But are one and a half, five, or even 13 acres considered industrial agriculture? Maybe not. But the intention of long-term viability of these operations is what we either continue the degradation of these product lands or work with nature to enhance the watershed processes we all develop on. Crop production has historically been under the purview of the Department of Agriculture, which has technical and professional expertise to appropriately manage these types of land management.
You're either gonna, you gotta wrap it up, or I'm gonna cut you off.
I'm almost done. Secondly, the Controlled Substance Act does not apply to cannabis with less than 2.3%. There are many questions to be answered, and we have solutions to integrating this particular plant onto the landscape. This is why further research is required, and by banning hemp countywide, we accept, except for the few parcels in the coastal zone, limit any virtual research. With the development of appellations and a successful marketing.
Thank you. I tried to give you, to tell you that it was time to wrap it up. The next, who is the next? Kent, you're up.
Well, you know, I've, I've, I, you know, started pulling licenses because I was in favor of, of, in, in, you call it industrial hemp. Do you have anything for medical hemp? I'm not quite understanding this. And I'm gonna make a free admission, you can call Sheriff Billy and have him come to my house, but I'm getting black market CBD hemp oil for my joints, and they're gone. And I don't, I don't know whether the chair joints are gone, but I was in construction and, and, and I, I'm a strong believer in this product. So I don't quite understand how that all works. So here's a confession, I might have a little bit of THC down in my knee, or the bottom of my heel I bruined, or the, or the arthritic joints I have in my hand from swinging hammer all these years. And so I don't really quite understand that it's not been facilitated for people to, to go ahead and, and maybe it is, as long as they pay their taxes, that seems to be what this whole thing's about, is so Amy Nielsen's Army can get her, her money for the county and stuff. It seems to be all monetarily driven here, and I, I have a hard time understanding this process where the medicine is not, not just, the hemp medicine is, is not encouraged, facilitated, enabled to its max. And I don't, the last thing I want to have is somebody being pollinated, cross pollinating, this, that, or the other. But top-quality medicine should be enabled, facilitated, so that old people like me can maybe get around and, 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 I don't know how many people you are, there are, that are old, but when your knee's hurt, if something helps, then that's something I'm gonna do. So I really, I really don't quite understand, and maybe I'm not understanding what this is doing, but I felt like I was pushed away, and even though it's not profitable, it's something that I felt was important to get out there if it has medical things. And so, boy, I just, I just don't quite get this whole thing, that I was not enabled to do this and other people weren't enabled to do, provide medicine. I would have given it away and be happy to do it in a responsible way and give it away. But nope, can't get the permits, can't do it. So there you go. I guess it's all about, everybody's gotta be stoned. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Unmute yourself, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, this is Benjamin. Hello?
Yes, please speak.
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is Benjamin Grant. I, I resonate with what Kent just said about this being a medicinal plant that, that people should be able to have access to. I've got a libertarian lean to me, and I don't think the government should be able to pick winners and losers. There are potential threats to the local cannabis industry from cross pollination and pests, but there, those aren't problems that we can't solve. In the draft hemp cultivation ordinance, with input from the community members, we wrote in those protections for female CBD-only hemp, not fiber seed. I had a saying, grow males, pay bales, you know, put some teeth to it. I know the county likes writing big fines to people who, who don't do right by the environment or their neighbors. But we can responsibly grow high-cannabinoid hemp in Humboldt County without impacting the environment with the expertise and professionalism of our ag department and the Commissioner there, and the skill of our farmers. We don't want to hurt our neighbors. And truth be told, that's why a lot of legacy community members didn't sign up for your program to grow legal weed, because they understood that they're taking money and giving it to the authorities to take down their neighbors and hurt their community. And morally and ethically, they could not do that. So I applaud College of the Redwoods for trying to pursue education and research. I do think it's disingenuous, as the mission of CR is to train the workforce of Humboldt County to grow hemp, to, to educate the workforce to grow hemp, but actually only work in a cannabis market. That's disingenuous and doesn't make any sense, kind of totally upside down. But I, I, I conduct research in hemp, and there's a plethora of knowledge to be learned there. We, we already have an ordinance drawn up with industrial hemp management zones that are all in the coastal zone, far away from the big farms that could be negatively affected. So I'm strongly opposed to this moratorium. You can hear it in my voice, I'm fired up. Thank you for the time and the ability to speak on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Public 4851. Unmute yourself. 4851, are you there?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Marie Mills, and I'm an owner of the small business, The Hemp Connection, in Garberville. Myself and my daughter operate the business, and I actually started the business 30 years ago with the goal to educate people about other uses for the cannabis plant, where retail, small retail store in Garberville. And this ordinance is very disturbing to me. I feel that there would be a way for marijuana and hemp growers to work together. And when you bring up the question about bringing in new pests and the pollination issue, well, you have the same issue among marijuana growers themselves. They have various pests that they can pass on to one another, and they also can pollinate one another when they're, if they're, have male plants that get away. Anyway, what I do want to say is I really support the ability for College of the Redwoods to grow hemp and do education and research. And I would ask that it be open to other people to have that ability to grow some hemp to educate people. I am talking personally about myself the need because we've been selected by a nonprofit to be a landmark on the historical cannabis trail of Northern California. And after 30 years of business, we were the first hemp store to open in the U.S. Anyway, I would like to have the ability to grow a small number of hemp plants, like maybe the limit of six, like we have for personal use for marijuana, on the patio of our store, so that when this landmark presentation is given, it's going to happen in June, and I would be, I would like to be able to have some hemp plants so that I could educate the people who are coming about the various uses of the plant. And I would like to be able to physically show them the parts of the plant and what, like the stalk, the fiber coming from that, from fabrics and paper, et cetera. And I think if they could just see the physical plants themselves rather than charts and pictures and that sort of thing, I think it would be a much more meaningful educational process. So I would like to know if there is any possibility of opening this.
Wrap it up.
Proposal up, so that something like that could be done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And one more real quick thing. I do want to thank the Planning Department in the past, actually the year 2000, when we erected our hemp connection sign above our store. And we were gonna be evicted for having such a sign up, and there was a big community uproar. And the Planning Department did say that they had no problem with what was on the face of the sign. And that allowed us to continue. Thank you.
Next caller, Thomas Mulgrew. Go ahead, Thomas. You there, Thomas? One last chance.
Oh, now you can hear me. I accidentally muted myself. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions, and I, and hopefully staff can answer these questions. Does the small farmer ordinance, the 2,000 square foot that you just passed, allow for CBD cultivation as well as THC cultivation? And if, if so, what is the cost? Because in the development of that process, I believe the cost was drastically reduced to be able to pull that permit. The second question I have is, does the Personal Use Ordinance allow for cultivation of CBD plants if you have a medical recommendation up to 400 square feet? And if you're just doing it for recreation? up to four hundred square feet, and if you're just doing it for recreational use, six, uh, six plants? And the third question I have, I believe the previous state license fee for a hemp farm was like nine hundred dollars, and I hope to be corrected if I was wrong. But if it is whatever that previous fee was, is that fee that comes to the county enough money to, for the appropriate staffing, the staffing to monitor the, any proposed hemp farms? And those were my questions, and hopefully they can be answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Would you like to, okay. Uh, any other public comment? I'm not seeing any hands up, so I will close the public comment, and I will bring it back to the commission and let the director make a comment on those questions.
Yeah, thanks. And, and Mr. Mulder's comments or questions are, are really to the heart of some of what's been raised today, is the small farmer provisions do not limit, um, either CBD or THC. So there is the ability to grow a medical grade cannabis, medical grade hemp under the, uh, uh, small farmer initiative, or small farmer ordinance. Uh, personal use could also include the CBD plants. Uh, so if somebody wanted to have six or less plants, or a hundred square feet on a parcel that's less than acre, two hundred square feet between one and five acres, or, uh, over four hundred square feet for, uh, parcels in excess of five acres, they, they could do that for personal use. In terms of the state license fee for hemp, uh, that's really something that goes to the ag commissioner, and, and I'm, I really can't comment on that.
Uh, with that, I will bring it back to the commission for discussion and deliberation. Anybody have any, go ahead, Mike?
I'm sorry, I couldn't get my hand raised, so I just did it manually here, the regular way, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, my question is, is, um, did CR approach us about, um, using their, uh, campus as a research and development, um, facility for, um, the hemp?
Yeah, I can respond to that, Michael Richardson. They approached the agriculture commissioner,
That answer your question?
Um, and what kind of, um, if we leave it as it is proposed, um, how much room do they have? And we've got it just for the CR campus at Tompkins Hill, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're suggesting. And that, that campus is quite large, uh-
Right.
Twenty-five acres or more. Um, and we asked them to provide details of specifically what they wanted, uh, what they were envisioning for their program, and they decided to not, um, not go that route. And I'm not exactly sure why. I think they're just not quite ready to define their program yet. Um, but nonetheless, uh, Commissioner Dolph thought it was, would be a good idea to try to carve out an allowance in the ordinance for them at some point in the future, should they decide to, um, to, to, to launch that program. And, and so this is what we came up with. Uh, some of the comments from the Coastal Commission, uh, really speak to concerns about the potential size of the cultivation area. Uh, it's really undefined in the ordinance at this point, and they, they seem to, to want to put some size limitations on the, uh, on the cultivation area that's allowed. And, and that's certainly a, um, an alternative for your, your commission to consider. We could put a, a one acre, two acre, five acre cap on the allowance at CR, uh, whatever you think is appropriate. Um, and then they also, uh, have in the, um, in the coastal cannabis ordinance, there's quite a few performance standards that apply to cultivation of cannabis. And, and it would be fairly easy to take those standards and apply them to this industrial hemp, so that it wouldn't be out of line with, uh, grows that you might see on other properties in the, in the area.
So the rest of my question would be, um, you know, I see the alternative here with one or two acres. How much, how many plants, you know, because I don't know exactly, um, what would that entail then? Is that, I guess, one acre would be sizable enough for research or not?
You know, that's a, a great question. Though, there are two ways that commercial industrial hemp is produced. One of them looks very much like normal cultivation of cannabis, and there you can get quite a bit of, uh, difference in, um, genetic strains, I think, in one or two acres. The other way that industrial hemp is grown is just by broadcasting seed into an area, and there it'd be hard to imagine a cultivation of an acre being large enough to result in different, uh, you know, in enough separation to provide the necessary, um, research controls.
That it, Mike?
Thank you, yes.
Uh, Brian, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to go ahead and express my, uh, desire to move forward with the staff recommendation. I feel that, uh, staff has addressed most, if not all, of the public, uh, confusion and comments regarding, um, small farmers and individual, uh, use. Uh, but this is really more for the industrial scale, uh, land use. Um, at this time, you know, I feel that it's incompatible, uh, and a danger to, to the industry that we have, uh, worked so hard to, to develop here. So I'm ready to move forward, and I think that we could determine an appropriate cap on the, the number of acres at the time that College of the Redwoods comes forward with an application, so that we have an opportunity to understand the exact nature of the research they'd like to perform and not, um, unduly burden them without understanding what they'd like to do.
Brian, Noah, I see you have your hand up?
I do. Um, yeah, it's, it's a small point, but I just wanted to, um, actually go back to one of the public, uh, speakers, Marie Mills, the, uh, founder and owner of The Hemp Connection in Garberville. Um, and, uh, it seems from the discussion that followed that, that her specific request that she be able to have industrial hemp plants growing and on display on her property within the, the personal use limit of, of six plants or whatever, that would be under various other, um, various other, uh, allowed uses that we've discussed, okay? I, I, or, and if this is too complicated to, to pull out in the middle of the meeting, maybe I, I shouldn't make it. But, but I wanted to hear, I, I wanted to flag that that comment was made. It, it is actually a pretty special store. Um, I have an old relationship with Marie. I, I know her personally as a institution in that community, and that store has been around a long time. I'd love to be able to have it be honored by the landmark commissioner trail. Thank you.
Noah, the director would like to address that issue.
I just wanted to remind the commission that industrial hemp by definition is a minimum of four thousand three hundred and twenty-five square feet. So when you're talking about just a few plants, we're, we're really not talking about industrial hemp.
Yeah, sounds fair.
Thank you. Oh, see Melanie, you can put your hand up. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that, that, um, we're talking about larger, um, amounts.
Right. Thank you. Uh, Ronnie, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm, I'd like to, um, make a motion in the interest of moving this forward. Are you comfortable with that?
Do.
Based on evidence in the staff report and public testimony, make all the required findings and adopt the resolution recommending that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors find that the proposed ordinance amendments are exempt from the SEQA pursuant to sections fifteen zero fifty C two and fifteen zero six zero C three, and statutorily exempt from SEQA pursuant to sections twenty-one zero eight zero point five and twenty-one zero eight zero point nine of the Public Resources Code and one five two six five of the State SEQA Guidelines, and that the Board of Supervisors adopt the industrial hemp zoning ordinances. Hope I got all the numbers right.
All right. Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, I believe that was Brian. So, uh, any more discussion? Go ahead, Mike. You're muted. You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm doing a, uh, Mr. Chairman type move there. Um, so that includes the CR option on the CR campus only at Tompkins Hill with, um, size to be determined at a later date when they come forward with, um, um, a plan for their research. Is that
Yes.
Staff want to turn in on that? Yes. Okay, that is correct. All right. With that, any other discussion?
Well, real quick, if, if there were to be a, um, a, a good opportunity in the future to, um, to allow an established agro, to allow CR, let's say, to do this work on this shively property that, that was brought up. Um, I, and, you know, I can see it's kind of a can of worms, and I wasn't proposing that we go there tonight, but I would want to know if it would be possible down the road to seek other exceptions specifically for, for other CR parcels in the county or other research parcels in the county. Um, or are we really for, or are we closing the door to that? Because I, I have a little bit of a hesitation about closing the door to it.
Quite honestly, what we are trying to do is address CR's request, which they tended to back away from. At this point, it's my understanding, we're already giving them more than they've really contemplated. And, and so to try to expand things and what they may ever do is, is well beyond, uh, the, the scope of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? See none. I will now call for the question.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Affirmative.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Laura. All right, we're rolling. So now we're going to move to the big one of the night, Rolling Meadow Ranch LLC, conditional use permits in the Bloxburg Myers Flat area, uh, staff report. I'd like to know how that's considered Bloxburg and Myers Flat. It's McCann. Yeah, I tried to understand that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask, um, with this extensive item here, the staff report and all of the comments, will we be going beyond nine thirty? Will we have enough time tonight to address this whole thing? I'd rather do it at one time than break it off.
I, I think there's enough time. What do you think, Director? I, I know there was a lot of comment, public comment that came in and supplementals.
I'm seeing forty-five people in the, the queue. So if each one of them speak for three minutes, um, it's, it's going to be more than forty-five minutes. Um, I think it would be helpful to at least get an introduction, uh, start to get a, uh, maybe an introduction from the applicant, and to start to hear from the public. But if the commission's pleasure is to just be able to try to hear it all at one time, understand that desire.
I agree with Newman. I'd prefer to do it all in one shot.
Is that the pleasure of the commission, to go that way?
Um, yeah, especially if we could put it at the, you know, top of the agenda, so it, you know, since people have waited a long time for it tonight.
Yeah. Okay, seems like there's consensus about that. So Director, would you like to still have a staff report tonight? And is that what you were saying, you were saying-
What I'm hearing is the commission, the will of the commission is to not even start this tonight.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought they were saying, too. That's why I was going to ask the question.
I mean, and, I, you know, to be honest, there, there was a lot of material provided to us, um, just yesterday. So I, I can't say I've honestly digested it. And, um, so maybe, maybe pushing it back to the next meeting will also allow that supplemental material to be distributed in a new staff report or something.
Need a motion to continue it to January twenty-first.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
And to move it towards the front of the pack, so that-
Yes. So it's moved to January twenty-first, you said? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion about that? All right.
Laura, for the question. Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Affirmative.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, so that made some time. We'll move on to, uh, new business, election of chair and vice chair, is what it looks like. So Director, you want to say anything about this?
I, I, I really don't, other than to say that I think Commissioner Bonjio's done a fantastic job. And, uh, it is the custom of the planning commission to, um, elect or reelect, uh, chair and a vice chair each year. And, and so, um, it's really up to the commission how you want to make motions and consider this.
Thank you. So what's the thoughts out there, guys?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to reelect the chair and vice chair to another term. Um, I think you've done both excellent jobs and, and, um, if you are willing, both of you are willing, um, to do it, that's my motion.
And I'll second that. Peggy.
Third.
Is there any other discussion?
I, I was going to move that we have to arm wrestle each year to see who's actually the chair. Alan, you have done a great job in, in totally unforeseen chairmanship circumstances. I really applaud you. I haven't actually yet had to step in, but I'm happy to be your vice chair again.
Well, thank you for the vote of confidence, guys. I really appreciate that. I try hard. I don't do very good with a computer, though, I can tell you. So with that, I guess we need a motion to that.
We did a motion and a second. We did a motion and a second.
Okay, go ahead, Laura.
Alan Bonjio?
Affirmative.
Ronnie Pellegrini?
Affirmative.
Noah Levy? Mike Newman?
Affirmative.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Melanie McAver?
Yes, happily. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, everybody. And thank you, Noah. Well, one of these days, I'll just stay home, and then you can come in and do it. All right. With that, we have a departmental report, the Ad Hoc Committee on Street Improvements. That'll be, Director.
Yes, and I believe Bob Bronco is, is here with us this evening, too, and he is welcome to weigh in on this. We are currently, and this is primarily Bob Bronco, who's taking the lead in doing this, is putting together a set of discussion items to meet with the subcommittee that the Planning Commission elected to study and consider options for minimizing frontage improvements in order to facilitate more affordable housing. So we anticipate that we'll have the work done and be ready to start having the committee, subcommittee meet, or the ad hoc committee meet, I believe, the, the first of March, or maybe we said first of February, but probably first of March to be reasonable. And so then we will meet over a series of probably several months, and then bring a report back to the Planning Commission. Mr. Bronco, anything you want to add to that?
Thank you, Director Ford. That summarizes it fairly accurately. We do want to go ahead and make sure we're putting together sufficient background information and program data to make the ad hoc committee successful in their venture, and be able to provide a meaningful report for consideration by the Planning Commission, which can then be passed off to the Board of Supervisors for further action. Thank you.
That's about it.
Happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions to the Director?
I appreciate hearing the update and that it's going to start moving within, you know, a couple of months.
I, and I would urge sooner rather than later, if it could be, say, middle of February, maybe, somewhere in there, or something like that. Somewhere in between. Just, we need to move on this as much as we can now that we're through the holiday times and all of that. But if Bob can help steer that and get that towards the middle of February, that would be much better than way off to March, the start of the, the last of the first quarter here.
Yeah.
We'll expedite it.
Any other issues that anybody wants to talk about, anything, Director, that you want to just heads up with what's coming or anything, or?
I think the, we, obviously, Rolling Meadows is, is going to be a time-intensive discussion that we will see on the 21st of January. We are seeing now reports come in from the consultants as well as staff, both for current planning and cannabis planning. So you can expect to see more agendas that look a little bit more like this with either something large and some other things in there, or, or lots and lots of, of, of work. The 21st is now looking like a big agenda. And, and so I just want you to be aware of that. If we're bringing too much, we will address that through some means. We may ask for a special meeting. But we also recognize how important it is to have information available as timely as possible. We were concerned about the late submittals with Rolling Meadows. I, I anticipated your displeasure with that. So I'll apologize for that, but it was really unavoidable, given when this stuff came in. So we will endeavor to do a better job about that.
Thank you, Director. I was going to make a comment about it, but I'm not going to. Now you've covered it, it'd just be nice to have some time to read things before the meeting. I literally was walking up the steps and getting the supplemental to my phone tonight. So it was like, I'm not going to even get a chance to look at it, so. Anyhow, any other comments?
Yeah, I had, I had a question. I was just wondering if the Director could talk a little bit about the timeline for putting the supplemental materials on the, the same site that the public goes to now for the agenda and the other items?
Thank you. That's a great question, something we're struggling with. The site that we, the name of the program is called Legistar. That closes once we post the agenda. So we can't continue to add information to that. That's why, I, I need to find out why that happens. I'm not clear on that yet. But we do recognize that for supplemental information, it needs to be available to the public. You, as the commission, should have the ability to look and see what the, the complete roster of items that have been sent out are in one comprehensive place. And, and so we, we want to improve that communication, and, and we will have that done by January 21st.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Go ahead, what, Tom?
I guess one last thing. Like Alan said, I mean, these supplementals are really hard to read on a phone when that's all you have at the time, especially if you get it at 4:30.
We, we sent supplementals out to you today at 4:30?
Yeah.
No, just a hypothetical. It, it has happened, but not today.
Okay.
Laura, I was actually getting out of my truck.
Okay, we, we need, I will commit to finding a, a different practice. If, if there's things that we need to change this late, we'll just continue the item. Because you're right, that's entirely unfair. You, you can't consider volumes of information an hour before the meeting. So my apologies for that.
Thank you, Director. Anything else? Well, see you none. I think that all of this meeting of the Planning Commission adjourned.
See you in a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
On the 21st. All right, good night.
Good night.